Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's Meeting tonight, Thursday, August 18, 2022. I call our meeting to order and ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, I'll ask our fellow town manager and fellow select people if there's anything that we need to look at as for additions or changes to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Okay, hearing none, that means we should be good to go. This next section is our public comment section. This section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and their name in the chat box and they will be recognized. And again, because of the potential length of the meeting, we are going to limit the comments to three minutes or less. So is there anyone for comment?
Mel Lekker has a public comment.
Okay, Mel?
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. Mel Lekker, 62 Wellswood Road. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Heather Summerer as an applicant candidate, however you want to term it, for the open position in the Ram Board of Education. I've known Heather for several years. She's a very bright, very thought-provoking person. She's very successful in dealing with people, as displayed by her professional position with Pratt Whitney Aircraft. She's got, well, one child in the school, but one graduate of Ram has been very involved with the school with cheerleading and is very interested in seeing that all kids are successful coming out of the Ram environment. So I don't think we can go wrong by placing Heather in the open position, and I'm very, very confident that she'll do an outstanding job and be a team player at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No one else? Okay, moving forward, our good-to-know special recognition. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've got a delay or something. Does it sound like an echo view?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Yeah, I appear on the list. As being on here twice. I could get out of that. Well, Dan, why don't you go ahead and sign off?
I'm going to dismiss one of you.
Okay, well, we have apparently two young gentlemen, and I'm going to guess that either they're twins or they're definitely brothers. So we have two people who have attained the rank of Eagle Scout, which in itself is an incredibly great achievement. And to have two brothers do it at the same time, I think, is fantastic. So for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout within the Boy Scouts BSA Troop 28, we have Sean T. Bronworth. Hopefully, that's fairly close. And we'll talk about Sean, and then we'll talk about his brother. Whereas Sean T. Bronworth has been a member of the Scouts BSA for seven years, attaining the rank of Eagle Scout in March 2022. And whereas Sean's commitment to the Scouts BSA has been evidenced by earning 28 merit badges in art, astronomy, camping, canoeing, communications, citizenship, first aid, lifesaving, personal fitness, rifle shooting, scouting heritage, swimming, environmental sciences, and space exploration, to name a few. Whereas Sean's leadership ability also moved him through the ranks of his troop to serve as Assistant Patrol Leader and on to Patrol Leader. Whereas Sean also awarded, was also awarded the National Outdoor Achievement for Camping and the Bronze Eagle Palm Pin. Whereas, as an Eagle Scout project, Sean designed and built an outdoor fire pit and stage at the Hebron Lions Fairgrounds. Both the fire pit and stage were built using donated stones and bricks. The fire pit allows the site to be used in colder weather. The site is also fitted with two flagpole holders, which can be used during events and ceremonies. The completed project site is used by the Lions, the Boy Scouts, and other local groups from the area for outdoor meetings and gatherings. Whereas Sean graduated from the Ram High School in June 2022, while a student, he was a member of the Varsity Lacrosse and participated in the Model United Nations Card Club, High School DECA, and High School Mock Trial. Whereas Sean will be attending Clark University in August 2022, and he will be majoring in economics. And now, therefore, no, I'm sorry, now Sean is also currently employed as a camp counselor and assistant coach for the RIP at Lacrosse Club. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hebron, in recognition of Sean's years of achievements, dedication in leadership in the Boy Scouts, BSA, and in our community, hereby designate July 31, 2022, as Sean T. Bronheart Day, and express our sincere congratulations and admiration for his accomplishments. Thank you. Did you want to say anything, Sean?
I just really appreciate that you guys are doing this, so thank you very much.
You are welcome. Anybody want to ask anything of Sean? I want to, again, I would just, you know, to go from Assistant Patrol Leader to a normal patrol leader. Also, what is the Bronze Eagle Palm Pin, please?
So depending on how you, there's only a certain number of merit badges required of your eagle. And there's like palms is if you get an additional amount of merit badges, so I got enough to earn the bronze bomb, which I think is seven additional merit badges.
Wow, impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, oh, so we have two proclamations, Sean and Kevin?
Uh, the next one's Kevin, yes.
Okay, I'll listen to that one first. Okay.
Okay. And again, Town of Hebron proclamation honoring Kevin Bronworth for attaining the rank of Eagle, Eagles within the Scouts BSA Troop 28. Whereas Kevin Bronworth has been a member of the Scouts BSA for seven years, attaining the rank of Eagle Scout in January 2021. Whereas Kevin's commitment to the Scouts BSA has been evidenced by his earning 30 merit badges in camping, citizenship, communications, emergency preparedness, environmental sciences, first aid, physical, personal fitness, and swimming, to name a few. Whereas Kevin's leadership ability also moved him through the ranks of his troop to serve as Assistant Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader, Patrol Quartermaster, Instructor, and on to Assistant Senior Patrol Leader. Whereas Kevin was also awarded the National Outdoor Achievement for Camping. Whereas, as an Eagle Scout project, Kevin installed trail maps and trail markers in quarter-mile intervals along Raymond Brook Preserve Trail owned by the Town of Hebron. The trail markers increased usability and safety for the trails for runners, walkers, and bike riders. People are able to track their mileage and location along the trail using these markers. Whereas Kevin graduated from Ram High School in June of 2021. While a student, he was a member of the Varsity Baseball, Varsity Cross Country, National Honors Society, and Unified Basketball. Whereas Kevin is starting his sophomore year at Clark University, he is a data science major with a 3.84 GPA. Kevin participates in varsity cross-country and student athlete advisory committee. Whereas Kevin is currently employed by Giuliano's Pools as a retail associate. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hebron, in recognition of Kevin's years of achievements, dedication, and leadership in the Scouts BSA and in our community, hereby designate July 31, 2022, as Kevin Bronworth Day, and express our sincere congratulations and admiration for his accomplishments. Wow, thank you. Okay, Mark? Or, well, Kevin, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing my brother and I. We worked hard and we appreciate the, yeah, the recognition. Thanks.
Perfect. Mark, you wanted to ask or say?
Yeah, I've known Kevin since, what, maybe you were in fourth or fifth grade, Kevin? Something like that?
Maybe sophomore, yeah, I want to say.
I think, yeah, maybe it was before that. So I've known Kevin for quite some time, and he's a, an example of what Hebron and Ram and the school system can produce. And the whole family with his, with his little brother achieving it at the same time he has, that's, it's an amazing accomplishment. And, you know, I'm very proud of both you guys. And, you know, your little brother's coming up to Clark with you, Kevin, too?
He is.
How do you feel about that?
I mean, I don't mind it. Yeah.
All right, well, good luck to both of you, and it's, it's very impressive. It's, we're all in awe of that achievement. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. And thank your parents also, because I'm sure that they must have given you a lot of support through the years. I kind of figured that maybe Dad back there. It takes a family to keep that kind of dedication and commitment. And thank you. And I personally wish you the best as you go through your college years, and hopefully you'll come back to Hebron. One always hopes that. So great. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Peter Casper. Yeah, I just echo the sentiments that have already been expressed, and something you should both be very proud of. And I view it as you've established a foundation, really, which is the part that excites me the most as just a member of the community, a foundation for a lifetime of service to any community in which you live in, because clearly you've demonstrated that commitment already. So in a world that basically every piece of news seems to highlight someone who can fall in the general category of disappointment, it is a joy to hear this and to spend the time to recognize both of you. And, and so I encourage you to continue to, to look to service to your community, excuse me, as something that you'll carry with you for the rest of your life and be a reflection of, of the work you've already accomplished. So, and I'm not just saying that because I'm like your dad. I think you have a lot to be proud of. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casper.
Good luck. Good luck at school. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have a letter from Heather, is it Summerer? Is that correct?
Summerer.
Summerer, okay. I'm tough on names. I so humbly apologize.
Well, there's a lot of ERs in there.
Well, we have a motion that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Heather J. Summerer to the Ram Board of Education effective immediately with a term to run until December 1, 2023. So hearing the motion, did you want to say anything? Heather?
Um, I really appreciate you guys considering me for the, for the role. I have been looking for a way to get more involved in the town. I've been, as, you know, most parents, really involved with my children through their activities, serving on the board for Ram Youth Football and Cheer, getting involved in their activities at school. And I just thought that the Board of Ed would be a good fit for me to, you know, kind of separate myself a little from the kids and do something independently on my own. We chose Hebron for the school systems. I think that the schools are, you know, really a key asset to any community, and it's what draws people to a community. So I just hope that my background from Pratt Whitney and my work in the community through Pratt Whitney, you know, those experiences will add value to the Ram Board of Ed.
Thank you. Hearing the motion, and Heather, does anyone have any questions of her? Go ahead, please.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, if I can. So Heather and I go way back, and it's great to see you here. I actually met her as a young communications professional interviewing for a job on her team at Pratt and Whitney. And although my work travels took me more on the higher education route, I so valued that experience with her, because one of the first things she noticed on my LinkedIn profile was that I lived in Hebron, because we had just bought our house here in Hebron. Heather's an exemplary professional, but beyond that, she's just a terrific person, incredibly dedicated to this community, as evidenced by her years of service in a number of different ways to this town and to its residents. I was honored to run alongside her last year for this board seat. It was wonderful to get to know her and her family more. And personally, I can't think of a better person to fill this seat, given her background in communications, working with various individuals to accomplish goals. And I know that she is deeply committed to maintaining the standard of education at Ram and elevating it further. So I enthusiastically support this, and I'm excited to vote to put her on the board tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had one.
Sure, please.
Um, my wife, whose position you're taking, just yelled in the background, "Great lady, great choice." So I thought I'd convey that to you. And you probably don't quite know what you're getting into, because it's a lot of work, and definitely a commitment of your time and energy. So I wish you well in that position. You know, I love Ram, and the Board of Education is very active and key in the success of Ram. So thanks for stepping up and doing this, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, hearing the motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Woodman, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very, very much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next thing, Town Managers' Report.
Okay, let's try this again.
Much better.
Thank you. So as everybody should know, the Hebron Fair is coming up, so we've been doing a lot of logistical work regarding that, with safeties, protocols, traffic permits with DOT, things of that nature. So we'll continue to meet with them to make sure we have a safe and successful fair. My office has been working diligently, as you'll see later on in this agenda packet, on the small cities grid, to finalize for approval. We, the town said goodbye to the past Fire Chief Bill Borst. That was a longtime Fire Chief here in Hebron. I see with us here tonight, we have our new River East reporter, so welcome. And we had demoed and removed the portable classrooms at the Hebron Elementary School. That was successfully completed. And working with the Public Building Committee on multiple projects, most recently trying to finalize the library roof project to go out to bid. I've been working with SHPO on a couple of matters, as late as today even. And just for a point of reference, we had a pretty good spike of COVID go through the town hall and the Horton House. My office had it. I think the tax collector had it, building official had it, Public Works had it. So it's still alive and well and with us. So be careful out there. Follow the guidelines if you can. That's all I had for the Town Managers' Report. There is some correspondence in your packet. We did receive a check back from Kirma for $26,006, which is always welcome. And then there is also the police statistical report for July. And then there is also a letter there from about jumping worms from Tom Lotto. So hopefully everybody had a chance to look at those correspondence in their packet. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, on that issue.
Okay, on the jumping worms issue, do we know if the River East, or, I mean, this is not only a Hebron issue, but a statewide issue, are there going to be possibly some story on that? Because it is something that potentially concerns, you know, if not at least the region, the state. And, you know, I just think it deserves a little bit more attention.
I could definitely shift this over to the River East and see if they'll do a story on it.
You know, as I say, it's definitely, I don't, I, just, just my kind of two cents. You know, especially as people, you know, they're cleaning up gardens and they're trying to do their fall beds and things like that. I think it'd be a worthwhile endeavor to make note of, of another, you know, I don't know what you would call it, invasion of a invasive species. You know, we have the jumping worms, also the lantern, I want to say it's the lantern moth is another one of special concern coming up. Anyway, thank you. I'll be quiet.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, could I just comment on your, your comment? Basically, because there was a front page article in the River East in May of this year. Sloan Brewster did an excellent article, and she interviewed Hebron residents that did have the jumping worms. So that has been an effort, and I actually, as soon as I heard that these jumping worms were in Hebron, basically, the Conservation Commission sprung into action. So we contacted Sloan Brewster so we could get a story going, and she did a great job. The problem was, she had to wait a while before actually getting that published, but she did it in May. And then we've been doing all kinds of publicity at the Hebron Day, at the Maple Fest. Yes, and I ran into you, Dan.
Yes, okay. I'm gonna have to cut you short, but I appreciate the input, and I'm hoping that maybe, you know, you and your commission can, you know, kind of work with the Town Manager's Office and the press and maybe get something else out, if that would, if that would work.
Absolutely. We'd love to have as much publicity as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess now we would be moving on to Item A, which is the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds. So attach as an updated ARPA Projects List for the Selectmen to review and begin discussions, considerations for the Round Two projects. The town recently received the tranche two payment. So there's other stuff trickling in. I know Selectmen, Peter Casper, wants to discuss some, some issues regarding this as well. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Peter?
No, I just, I have some stuff I can add, but no, we can talk about the broad list as a group first. I have a couple of things that I want to note, so I can just do that at the end.
Well, I mean, we have, we have the start of a list. I really think that, as we've done before, we need to probably get all these lists kind of put together so that we can then, you know, discuss them. And really, these items require more than just a brief review at a Board of Selectmen's meeting like this. I also am a little concerned that we may have some unanticipated costs coming up. So I'm not really in favor of spending all the money immediately. I think I want to verify and see how things shake out with other financial matters. God bless you. What, what, what is everybody else's feeling on this? Go ahead, please. Yep, Tiffany?
Well, I think, um, I think just specifically with the projects that are listed that have tentative attorney approval, particularly as it relates to Gilead School, I mean, I think we need feedback from the Board of Ed on that one, for example. So, you know, I'm reticent to approve a project that hasn't been specifically, you know, I don't think we should, I think we need to do our due diligence when people are requesting projects on behalf of boards, and we need to talk to said boards before we agree to add something to a list. So I personally would want to hear from the Board of Ed on a water system at Gilead Hill School, and if they feel that that's something that, that they need and that they want in this list. So that's one thing that jumps out at me, at least in this early Round Two list, that I think some of those projects that are, have tentative approval, I think we really need some more input before we move forward.
Mr. Chairman?
I completely agree with you. You know, there's no dollar amounts. We already have heard from, you know, the state on the project. So if this were to go forward, this would definitely be entirely on the backs of the taxpayers. You know, we need to get input on it. You know, we also need to see what other funds are available for some of these types of projects. So I agree with you. We, we need to hear some more facts. Go ahead. Yes, Andy?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, just for clarification, what we did with the first round is the same thing we're doing with the second one. As the requests come in, we list them. We're not looking for approval. Tonight, we're just showing you, as people submit requests, we put them on there for the whole Board of Selectmen to view. We're not looking for approvals for the second round. It's just starting to accumulate some of the requests on the second round. This is more or less just an update. So I apologize if that, if that's confusing.
And Andy, I wasn't implying that you were looking for approval, but I was offering feedback to the point that these projects need more information before we even put them on a list for consideration for approval. I think the Board of Ed needs to weigh in on this water system, and if it is something they would request in Round Two. And if it is, we can discuss it. But if it is not, I mean, you know, I think we'd need to defer to the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Peter, I didn't mean to lure you into the conversation, but I thought you had to speak, speak about the heating assistance drop.
I just didn't want to, yeah, I did, and I appreciate that reminder, and I just was thinking about letting the others sort of provide some comments for us, but I absolutely wanted to talk about both those things, so I can do that now. If Tiffany, you're good, I don't want to interrupt you if you still had more to say.
All set. Thank you.
Okay, okay. And Mr. Chairman, okay, if I, I add those. So the, the issue that, two things. One, that my, the heating assistance, I was reacting to some of the correspondence we received from Sharon earlier over the last week or two, I forget the exact time period, but talking about the reduction in dollars available for heating assistance. And then she took the time to provide some additional context around the needs of our local citizens and how that could be potentially impacted with the reduction in funds, and then coupled with what amounted to, you know, seriously, you know, obviously COVID and all that's related, but it's put a lot of pressure on things like heating oil and, and obviously those prices have, you know, they've come down a little bit, but they've come down, like gas, you know, you're relieved when the gas is only $4 a gallon, and that's still not really good. And, but it was five, and then when heating oil was $6 a gallon, when we're used to paying two, and we had a number of families that were getting assistance with heating oil prices that were more typically what we'd expect, and now those have, well, let's at least comfortably say they've doubled. And with the reduction in funds available, I was concerned that there was going to be a gap for Hebron residents specifically tied to the heating assistance, just year over year, if nothing changed, there would be a gap, and then add that, a doubling of fuel prices, I'm concerned about that and wanted to, and appreciate Sharon's time that she took to provide additional information, but I think we have to think about, at least discussing how we can potentially be prepared to provide additional assistance and close a gap that you can make at least a lucid argument that has a direct correlation to the COVID on our citizens. So that was one item that I wanted to at least bring up for discussion. And to finish the thought on the other item, the two things that Andy referenced, the, you see a note here on the support for local businesses, that has come up before, we've seen the correspondents asking for dollars from these funds to be potentially made available to some of our local businesses. I think that probably warrants a great deal of, or some degree of discussion. That's a little different, I think, considering some of the support they've received over, over the last year and a half, but nonetheless, we've had the request multiple times, we had a public hearing recently, and it was brought up again by a couple of businesses. And so we had talked in the past about potentially opening back up the Open for Business Task Force to, you know, as one vehicle in which to maybe consider this, but I don't want it to go, whether or not it deserves, we should do it, okay, we haven't gotten there yet, but I definitely want to bring it up for conversation, which then maybe goes back to Tiffany's comment, is it cleaner to sort of separate from a list perspective, items for discussion versus items that maybe conceptually have already been agreed to, but maybe don't have a dollar amount attributed, but conceptually the board has agreed to put them on the list versus a number of items like this that warrant discussion, but maybe shouldn't necessarily surface on a list, because sometimes when you see a list, you, there's an assumption that it's, it's what we're moving forward with, you know, even though clearly Andy's particularly, that's not the case, but still nonetheless. So those are the two areas that I wanted to make sure we at least had an opportunity to discuss, or at least had on the list for future discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mark.
So I, I agree with what you said earlier, Danny, about not promising or indicating that we're giving this money out to people that have applied for it, because as additional things come out that become more pressing, I think we need to have some reserve. I'm particularly looking at the VOE request for a second SRO. And as we try to move forward with developing a better active shooter program, providing more safety for our citizens, instead of the town taxpayers incurring that whole cost, if we do move forward with that, we're going to need a new car, we're going to need to outfit an officer, he's going to have to have a radio, he's going to have to have all the equipment necessary. So instead of waiting till the ARPA funds are all gone, I think we should think about making some of those determinations now, so we can offset those costs later if we choose to, which I would be supporting, an additional officer to be maybe a part-time SRO and half in the, in the Town Patrol, and efforts to make more visitations to the school and make them safer. And it isn't just about an officer. We started our active shooter training program last week with the police. I'm meeting with Dr. Baird and Heather Pettit next week. The schools are key in their response and in their training and getting their resources. So, so to me, that's a critical thing that needs to be done as opposed to some other things. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Yep. And, and on that topic, and we are going to be, I'm sure, getting into it later, but there's two buckets on, on that, on that topic. The first bucket is the equipment. That is a, and excuse me if I, if, if people think I used the wrong term, that is a one-time cost. I know it's not necessarily one time, but it's not an every year cost. You know, so the equipment, the truck, or the other truck. Wow, the car, the, the outfitting of the car, all of that is one bucket. And then you have the recurring bucket of the pay, which would be an ongoing thing. So even if that money comes out of this fund for year one, that would be an automatic add-on to future budgets in year two through to whatever. Yeah, so a couple of different areas that we have to kind of look at, at just that one item, you know, as, as we go through the discussions on that.
Well said. I understand what you're saying. It just, it certainly, certainly would be beneficial to everybody to, to get the upfront cost, which is significant, out of the way, instead of having to grab that and contribute to a salary too, which is going to be a recurring cost, but just the outfitting cost alone is over $100,000. So I'd hate to see that added into a budget if we can get that through ARPA.
That, and then of course, the other issue is, you know, we do have, you know, budget protocols, how budgets are created, how they are voted on by the, by the taxpayers, and, you know, and it, we've got to be cautious how, how we bypass that whole aspect of town government. You know, people having a vote on a budget is a very special thing, and it, I, I'm concerned, I, I don't know how, how to word it, but it's definitely something that we need to make sure how we, we go down that road. Okay. Andy, did you want to add anything, or does anybody else want to add anything on, on this topic at this point?
Well, two things. One, we're going to hit, hit the SRO. It's an agenda item later on in this packet. And two, if you want me to, what we've been doing right along, and I can change it or do it however you want, but as we get requests in, so the whole Board of Selectmen, to be transparent, can see what the requests are, we could put them in a different format, so it doesn't look like we're looking for approvals. Totally agree with everybody. We're not looking to throw that water system on there without talking to the Board of Ed, or if that's even going to make the cut, but it was requested. I wanted to be transparent and show that it was requested, and as we get other requests in, we'll, we could put them in a different format than just adding them to a list or around two, if that's implying like we're moving the project forward.
I'm not, I'm just trying to think of, and I hate to, it's, to me, it's a lot of work, and I don't know how, how much work would be under each one of these line items, if you will, to have a little narrative, the requestor and the reason for the request. I don't know. What's the feeling on the body?
I think that, Peter, I think that, you know, that this list does work. I mean, it is, it is clear. I, it's not like, you know, Andy isn't being clear to us, I just.
Oh, no, no.
You know, so I, I think that rather than have them do all that extra work, I think as we as a board are faced, you know, with, so now we're going to discuss the, this item or this item or this item, then the information can come forward. Because really, right now, we're trying to be transparent to the public, but really it's in the purview of, of our, you know, of our board to ultimately make the final decision on these. So I wouldn't need necessarily a lot of any extra work done until we talk about the particular items, and then, then we can bring that context, you know, up in terms of some of the documentation or who's requesting it or why. And so maybe as we go forward, we could flesh out some of these requests as a separate item and just say, okay, next board meeting, we're going to talk about the heating assistance, the, the local business support and, and the water system. And then they'll have the opportunity to bring forward some of the additional detail, and then we can decide if that stays on a list or goes off the list. So maybe there's a way to deal with this on chunks, because as we're going forward, it seems like the town is getting more and more requests, because it's just viewed as a whole bunch of money, and all of a sudden we're getting requests, you know, that are pretty significant, that are just moving forward and from a lot of different areas, from most areas. And I get it, but at some point the bucket's empty, and so we should probably start chipping away at a few of these, maybe again as a separate session or separate agenda item for the next meeting, but let's just talk about three of them, and either decide to keep them or put them on the back burner and leave them off the list for now. And so let's, I would suggest that we think about that, but until we bring up a particular item, I wouldn't ask the towns, the town staff to put any more information forward until that item becomes subject to discussion by the board.
Okay. I know Tiffany, you add your hand up.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Peter said, and I like the idea of taking out those items that we have questions on, and perhaps, you know, for the meetings moving forward, focusing on just those items. You know, certainly I want to hear from someone on the Board of Education about the water system before I make a decision or we make a decision, and whether that should be part of the list. And so I'd agree with what Peter had to say about perhaps sectioning off some items each meeting and discussing them as we look to cull the list a little bit.
Okay. One of the things that I think, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, that we probably want to discuss sooner than later would be the Wall Street Sidewalk Project. Is that is.
Yeah, we can talk about that. I'll add that to the next agenda if you want.
Well, that way there, because I know that's a project that quite literally we got surprised with some added costs, and if we are going to go forward that project, it's probably something that needs to get discussed and decided sooner than later is what I'm thinking. And if I'm wrong, please let me know.
Well, you're not wrong. We are moving forward the project. What, now that SHPO had given suggestions, we had to have some re-engineering done on that. So it had to go back to District Two DOT for another review, and if anybody works with the state, you know how long that's going to take. So I think we'll have plenty of time if we wait till the next agenda to add that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so as I say, some of these items that, you know, are more time sensitive, we should probably, you know, like Peter's saying and Tiffany, start, you know, maybe trying to pick them off and get them, get them moving. And that way also it gives us a running tally on, on the remainder of the dollars.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving on. The cannabis moratorium and next steps. You know, there's really nothing.
That's asterisk for this meeting.
Yep. So, other than that, any other new business, or old business, rather? Hearing none? New business? Andy?
Okay, this is going to be a little bit lengthy, but we need to do this. So I'm not sure if everybody got the adopt an updated resolution for the Small Cities Stonecroft Project, but we need to, we had to change this. We need to adopt this new updated resolution for Small Cities Stonecroft Project. And then after that, we would be looking for the board to award the bid for the Small Cities Stonecroft Building Project. So there's quite a bit of reading there, Mr. Chairman.
I know. Does anybody want to volunteer to read this?
I'll volunteer to read part of it, and maybe you or someone else on the board would take over, because I read it today, and it is quite a bit.
That's two pages.
And we, we have to read it? If, if we have to read it, I'll, I'll volunteer to help with Gail too, so we can split it up a little.
Yeah, we need to, we need to read it into the record. Okay, so if we're already, I'll start. Adopt updated resolution for Small Cities Stonecroft Project. This letter comes from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing regarding the Stonecroft Village CDBG Small Cities Grant. Proposed resolution, whereas federal monies are available under the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law 93-383 as amended, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Hebron make application to the state for an amount up to $1.5 million in order to undertake a Small Cities Community Development Program for the Stonecroft Project and to execute an assistance agreement therefore, should one be offered. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Selectmen. One, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And two, that the filing of an application by the Town of Hebron in an amount up to $1.5 million is hereby approved, and that Andrew J. Tierney, the Town Manager of the Town of Hebron, is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. To execute any amendments, recissions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Hebron. Three, that this resolution will authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to accept and execute legal documents specific to the Town of Hebron's Stonecroft, Stonecroft Village CDBG Small Cities Grant Number SC1906701, up to $1.5 million, to be funded by a combination of funding sources in partnership with the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and/or solely by the Department of Housing. Next person? Mark, do you want to read the rest?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I can't scroll down to get the bottom of this.
Hi, it's Donna here. That is the end of that resolution.
Okay.
The next one is a separate motion.
Ah, okay. Beautiful.
Thank you.
So, hearing, resolution, we'll label it as Resolution One. All in favor, please signify. signify by saying aye, or actually, is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none? All in favor? Pete?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay, so Mark, then this would be the, I guess, the bid award.
Is this one longer than Gail? Gail, you did a great job.
No, it's-
It's a lot, lot shorter than Mark.
Okay. Here we go. The Town of Hebron slash Hebron Housing Authority recently conducted a bid process for a small city CDBG project at Stonecroft Housing. The town has been able to-
It's, it's Donna. You, you do not need to read all of that for the motion. You just need to read at the bottom of the page, proposed motion. So that is the, that beginning was just a narrative of what we're looking for. And we do have, okay, and we do have our consultant, Peter Testa, here tonight if there's any questions about the bid process, selection of the contractor or anything project related. Thank you.
Okay. Proposed motion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the bid for the Stonecroft Building Project to a Preferred Construction LLC of Bridgeport, Connecticut in the amount of 100, 1,395,000 and authorize Andrew J Tierney, Town Manager, to sign contract documents and any other necessary documents.
Very well done. Do we have any questions of? Mr. Testa? So, Mr. Testa, does this, once passed, get this project rolling?
Mr. Chairman, once passed, it allows Andrew to enter into a contract with a preferred construction. And we are still working with DOH and CHFA in their finalization of how the funding is going to be provided. As noted in the resolution, Town of Hebron is going to be awarded 1.5 million for this project. DOH has said they're not certain at this point what their budgets are looking like. So they may, at a minimum, they're going to provide 1.1 million towards the project. They may provide the entire 1.5 million. It all depends on how their money is, is allocated as well. But in either event, the Town of Hebron is either going to receive the 1.1 from the housing, from DOH, Department of Housing. And if the other $400,000 is awarded by CHFA, that goes directly to the Housing Authority and that'll be used towards this project.
Okay. The timeliness of getting these things signed and rolling, are we getting any potential issues, you know, due to the time to try to get everything up and rolling? Or is the contractor, everybody's still okay and, and, you know, happy with the process and, and progress of the process?
I would, I would say yes. The contractor, excuse me, is aware of our efforts to secure the funding needed and he is just basically waiting for the go-ahead to enter into the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the proposed motion as read, please signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you and thank everybody. I mean, this is just a tremendous amount of work to try to get, to get all this up and done and printed out and get this project moving. So I thank everybody for all these efforts. Thank you. And thank you for spending the time tonight with us.
Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you, Peter.
You're quite welcome, Donna. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up on the agenda is Item 9B. This maybe is a surprise to some of the Selectmen, but the state doesn't give us a lot of time with deadlines for filing grants. So even though we had some funding allotted for this bridge, another round of steep grant money came out to the tune of approximately $500,000. So they're looking for projects that would fit the venue and this bridge, we felt between the new town planner, myself and Tom Fett and the engineer, that this would be a project that shovel-ready. We enhanced it a little bit because it's more money than what we were proposing. So we want to throw a steep grant application and hope we get it. If we do, that's other monies that we won't have to spend. So this is why this is in front of you tonight. Attached is a memo from the town planner, Matthew Bordeaux, regarding the steep grant. Recently submitted for the Hebron Green Library Parking Lot to Pendleton Drive Pedestrian Bridge Project. The grant deadline was August 15th. The grant amount will be available at the meeting. And then there's a proposed resolution. So due to time constraints, we had to get that in there to be considered. So we went ahead and submitted this. But it still needs formal approval from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So the resolution, do you have that amount?
Donna, did you have the amount for that?
I think Matt is here. Matt, do you have the amount? Here he is.
So the, the grant requested amount from the state was $493,200. And we would be matching a portion of that, and I don't have the exact percentage, but with the engineering design work that we would have to pay for anyways in order to do the work if it were approved under, or if it were to move forward under ARPA, there are going to be some engineering components and other elements of the project that we have yet to do. There's some additional survey work and things like that. But the requested amount from the state is $493,200. Or $493,200.
Correct. Right. Okay. Thank you. I'll read the motion, or the resolution, rather, and then open it up for discussion. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the application to the 2022 Small Town Economic Assistance Program, STEEP, for the Hebron Green to Pendleton Drive Pedestrian Bridge Project in the amount of $493,200 and authorize Andrew J Tierney, Town Manager, to sign any necessary grant documents and to apply for and accept and receive the grant if awarded. So hearing the resolution is ready discussion. Hearing none? All in favor? Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. And again, this is just everyday stuff that our staff does. So my hat's off to them. Okay. Andy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Item 9C. This is the Public Building Committee Meeting for Public Works Project and Update. The Public Building Committee will be holding a meeting on September 19th to update all the boards and the public on the public works project, including the last three studies performed and correspondence received from interested parties and the town engineer. Details on the meeting time and format are being finalized and will be announced to the public as soon as possible. So what this is, is we finally got some information back from SHPO. We're still waiting for one more letter from them. I talked to them today. Secondly, we have the wetlands re-flagged because it had been a period of time. So we wanted to make sure nothing had changed there. So we had that done by a licensed soil scientist. And then thirdly, Terry Han will be at that meeting, the landscape architect, and go over the scenarios of the placement of the building. There were some concerns from the public early on to see if we could move that project a little closer to Kine Road and try to save some of that, that backland for future development. So all those things will be discussed. Those are the three items that we've been waiting for. We were kind of hoping we had them a little sooner than now, hopefully the beginning of summer instead of the end of summer. So just for an FYI, what this will be doing is pushing back the referendum. We will not be ready this November to put that out to the voters.
And again, thank you. It just seems incredible how hard it is to get answers from the state and letters from the state. It just makes, it drags the project out almost unbearable timeframe. Again, I urge my fellow Select people, I know Tiffany, thank you very much. You know, if you have questions, you need to get it in so that answers can be garnered, just so that we're all kind of sort of up to the same speed. So thank you for doing that. And does anybody have any other questions or comments at this time or?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yes.
Because some of the questions that I'd sent in advance, I, I think they're important for the public to hear. So, and Andy was great in sending me a list. I was pretty busy at work today with a press conference. So I appreciate that you were able to email me some answers. I note in the last letter we received from SHPO that they are recommending that additional historic research be completed. And I'm wondering, who conducts that and when will that be done? Does that hold up any aspect of the project? I'm not sure, Andy, if you were able to work that out with SHPO today in your call.
I was. So, great question. Thank you. So originally SHPO sent a first letter on, I think it was, I'm having it in front of me, I'm pretty sure it was August 2nd. That pretty much gave us the green light and said that if this phase on the 11 acres, you're all set to move forward, shouldn't have any impact. Then I got another letter from SHPO on August 15th that stated, even though the 11 acres didn't really turn up anything in the study, it probably would behoove us to do some more research on the total or the whole parcel. So that was kind of conflicting. The two letters kind of contradicted each other and the second letter kind of contradicted itself. So there's been some turnaround, like a lot of state agencies. So I went to the person that we, we normally deal with, actually the woman that, that performed the work, Sarah Sportsman. And she spoke to Catherine Labadia, who we've, I've worked with, and Michael Liria's worked with our whole careers. And, and I said, the second letter is kind of confusing what we need to do. And, and she read it and she, she concurred with, with my request. I know they received a letter from the Historical Society and I think that's what prompted the second letter. So what I told her to do, I says, no, no uncertain terms, please just send us a letter of exactly what we need to do to move forward. If, if we need to do more stuff before we do anything, that's fine, but we really need to have that spelled out so the public, the Board of Selectmen, even myself can understand that. Because I said the letters conflict each other. So she had read it. She had talked to some people up there in her office and the person that did the research. And apparently there's going to be another letter coming out that's going to give us a little bit more clear, depicted path on how we should proceed.
And these letters will be available to the public, correct? Because I, I do think it would be important for the, the community to, to read what the state is recommending, the state's, you know, survey of the property, correct?
Absolutely. So it, it seems, and I feel everybody's frustration, including mine, the problem is, is we didn't, and we still don't have the green light to do a final design or final cost estimate. So once we get past these three hurdles, then we can set up or get to go ahead with the architects and the engineers to do a final design, exactly where the building's going to go, exactly what the building's going to cost, those things. And then we can have all the pertinent information we need to conduct these public hearings. It was kind of tough or it got kind of stalled until we, the first round of public hearings, we had these concerns that we looked into. But now that we have this information back, we plan on updating everything that we have on the website with all the letters, all the new, all the new prints. And I made an error. Sarah Holmes is the one that did the study, not Sarah Sportsman. That's the state archaeologist. But, so at this 19th meeting, once we address this information to the, the public and to the Selectmen, we'll come up with a, with a schedule. We'll, we'll update the timeframe that we're looking at for a referendum, the final design from the engineers, and we'll, we'll have anything that portrays to this project, the letters from the Tole Marys, the responses from the town engineer back to them. It'll all be part of the packet.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing then that I'd just like to add, just as a comment, is that, you know, I, I, I think it's important that we create a public hearing schedule that is inclusive and perhaps at different days and even times to make sure that we're reaching different people in the community. And that I do think that an initiative of this size is going to require some strategic thinking around how to communicate and to make sure we're using all avenues of communications from the website to social media to printed information and to essentially prepare as you would for any referendum. But, you know, I, I get a lot of questions about this project. I think the one thing I hear mostly is that people don't have enough information. So as we roll forward after this September meeting, I think it'll be crucial to make sure that we're using all communications avenues available to us to make sure that we have an informed electorate when they eventually go to the polls for this referendum. So thank you for taking the time to answer my questions.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have a question? I do. And it, it goes outside of, of our property. And again, trying to decipher what SHPO was, was talking about, does that affect other developers on other pieces of property in and around, you know, not only our town but other towns? I'm just trying to figure out how that piece fits in overall.
Tom, I can, I, I just to show you that I'm not the expert on SHPO. I, I have Tom Fett in here with us tonight. Tom, you could speak to that if you would, seeing you cover a bunch of towns.
Yes, let me just, I'll put my screen on and my, you want to put my screen on and my sound on. So yeah, to answer your question, the process with any project is there's a screening that happens. And, and typically what happens is a referral is sent into SHPO with some base information for a project. And they take a look at it and they'll determine if they think there's any potential archaeological, historical impacts. And depending on that determination, they'll recommend back to the town or the developer that additional studies are required. So we did that referral for this project. SHPO came back with a letter, asked for a Phase One archaeological study, and we retained, the town retained an archaeological consultant to prepare that report. So it is, it is a part of the process in, you know, pretty much any development project. And it's due diligence when the project is started. And then, you know, determining on what, depending on what, you know, SHPO's position is or recommendations are, then the appropriate studies are conducted.
So that would be for things, you know, and again, just looking here in town, you know, the CVS and, and the Colebrook and all that, they all go through that type of-
They do. In fact, we did, we did with Horton Boulevard, there was a, when the town did Horton, Horton Boulevard, there was in fact a Phase One and a Phase Two archaeological study. For the Raymond Book Trails, we did a, we did a Phase One and the, you know, so it's not uncommon on all these projects that they take a look at it. And the, you know, so it's not uncommon on all these projects that they take a look at it. And again, they don't always recommend a study, but it's a, it's a referral and a, they have an opportunity to comment and recommend whether those studies need to be done.
Very interesting. I don't know, first I heard of it. You know, naivety, I think this is the first time I heard about SHPO was on this, you know, getting this project off the ground. I don't think I've ever heard of SHPO before. And just very interesting. You know, you see these projects going on, not only, of course, here in town, but other towns, you know, some big projects. And I mean, literally Eastern Connecticut, if not all the state, has history. You know, this is, this is reality. So it's just, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have anything else while we have Mr. Fenton on? Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Next, Andy.
Okay. Item 9D. Hebrew Board of Education requests for Second School Resource Officer, SRO. In your packet attaches a letter from the Hebrew Board of Education requesting the town approve a Second School Resource Officer, SRO, for the start of the school year. There is currently one full-time SRO who shares his time between schools. The estimated cost of adding an SRO is $80,000 to $100,000 plus potential other overhead operational costs. Members of the Hebrew Board of Education have been invited to attend the meeting. So I did a little bit of homework. And Donna can put up my spreadsheet. But first off, and I think with people being realistic, even if I had an officer or a warm body available today, we would not have him certified and ready to go at the beginning of the school year. That's just unachievable. So that's, that's number one. Number two, by the time we, even if we did and we did everything as fast as we could, it would probably take three months. Am I right in pretty much in that estimate, Mark?
Yeah, absolutely. You might even be $10,000 or $15,000 too low. But yes, that's very accurate, Andy.
Okay, then the other, we're not trying to pile it onto this request, but we aren't flush with cars. We would, we would need to add a car. You need to have, you know, fast response. If he's going to be an officer and an SRO, he has to have the tools to do it. And unfortunately, that's a car. So we have the car amount listed on this proposal, but that's something the Board of Selectment could also take out of the ARPA funds if they so feel that would be appropriate to lighten the request. I just wanted to be transparent. If we're talking an SRO and everything he needs to do, this is pretty much what I put together. So with that being said, I think, you know, my suggestion would be not that I, I don't warrant the school's request. But Dana, you kind of touched on it a little bit. I mean, if we were to go forward with everything, you know, you're looking at about $176,000, $177,000 that was not in the budget. That's a pretty big ticket item. So what I try to do is always let, you know, people that have requests, whether it be in my office or to the Board of Selectmen, I would suggest to you guys is to do some stuff immediately that could help or make them somewhat safer. Something we could do probably, you know, sooner than later, waiting to try to put a new person in place, even if that were to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. I don't know. But what we presently have is patrols in town now. What we could do is add some money, just run that part-time police line. You know, for now, not ask for any money, to just add more patrols where we could have an officer during the day canvassing not just the schools, but also, you know, the town doing a little bit more patrols and then checking into the schools. There's also, as Mark stated, some training. There's toolkits that we could purchase for active shooter situations to have in the classrooms, things of that nature. There's some things that we can do right away to try to, you know, show good faith that we're working towards this. I would recommend that we try to put this in the budget, but I would step up patrols and more presence in the schools with additional hours. That could start pretty much at the beginning of the school year. But that's just my suggestion. There's the amount of money you're looking at, however you guys want to fund that. Or with ARPA funds, it was permissible to do that. But once again, my job is to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that that will be a one-time expense that would be reoccurring. So you're not going to be forcing that into the budget in previous, I'm sorry, in the following upcoming years. So we normally try not to do that. You might have different, you know, philosophies on that too. But the need is real. You know, the world we live in today, we should try to help them and do something. But I don't think we're going to get there right away.
What's up with her? Where are you down?
Okay. Yeah, and again, certain things that we.
Mr. Chairman, could this request that people view if they're not speaking? Because I can't really hear you with all the pronouns.
Okay. I'm wondering if it's not Elaine's. Somebody possibly give her. Okay. Yeah. Trying to think of words. Yeah, it's, it's a tremendous amount of money. It has not gone through any budget process. And it definitely would take time to get. I mean, even just our last car that we purchased, we got lucky and found one. It still took us what type of timeframe to get that car in and serviceable.
We still don't even have it.
Oh.
So there. That's my point exactly. We won't even have a car for another whole year, even if we were to find one right now. We're still waiting on that one you're talking about.
I'm definitely interested in, and again, you and Mark would be the two experts on things that could be done that would help the situation. And like you're talking about with, you know, other daytime staff. Now, do they also have to go through that special training?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be considered a full-fledged SRO. It would be a police officer, an armed police officer. That would be periodically helping and assisting and checking into the schools, also doing some patrols in town. That's something we could do immediate. That's something we wouldn't need a car for. And as the town manager, I'm recommending that's probably the best we can do for four or five months before we could even think about getting a person. But then we still wouldn't have a car, even if we had one on the lot, which we pretty much proved they're not out there.
Oh, Dan, you want me to add a little light to this? Dan?
Yes. Oh, please, please, please.
So obviously, there's a sense of urgency to this. So I agree with Andy. And we discussed this. To get something working quicker, we're going to have to use the resources that we have now. And we can up the duties of the patrol officer to, that's on during the day, to dedicate some time to supporting the SRO since he goes back and forth to two schools. So I think that's a great solution. Right now, we actually have really three working cars. And there's three officers on all the time. So if you add somebody else on, we have that older white car, which we employ to use sometimes, but that's not a solution. And then if somebody else is working due to construction, due to other needs, due to crime, where we have to respond and have directed patrols in those areas, we don't have the cars to do it. So I think having some forethought, when this other car comes in, we'd be about even. So if we're going to increase our patrol and increase the school resource officer, we'd have to get another car. And we have to start thinking about that right now because we're looking at a year away. So having been involved in the process of hiring officers, by the time you can get an officer hired and make a good selection, a good determination, get them trained, like Andy was saying, you're looking at five to six months. And the holdup on the car right now is not the car anymore. It's the radio. We can't get a radio in the car. So we keep battling through these things. Andy keeps battling through, the state trooper keeps calling everybody. We're looking for any avenues to get things done quicker. But, you know, we just keep plugging away. The main thing that we could do now, as Andy suggested, is use the resources we have. And training, you can have an officer, but if he's not trained in a school active shooter response, we're derelict in not preparing our guys to deal with that situation and take care of the kids. So the schools play a big part in that. So training is key. Coordination is key. Working on this together with the schools, with the town, with the police, with the fire department is what we really need to do. And we started already. It doesn't happen in a couple of months. We got to keep plugging away at this. I think everybody's on board with that. That's going to cost an additional amount of money. But for the training and maybe some changes to the school about identifying where to go, this is something we could get done for $20,000 or so. So with the additional things that we have. So that's, that's my recommendation as a, as an active shooter instructor, as the active shooter coordinator. And Andy and I and the trooper Reed have talked about this. So that's what we could do immediately. And as we move forward, then we can look to expand this. But the cars are key, equipment is key, and training is key right now.
Okay. So do we, as a board, then? What would the suggestion be? Do we, as a board, authorize to come out of ARPA $20,000 or $25,000 to at least cover some of the anticipated expenses?
What, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
What I would suggest is you empower myself as the town manager/chief of police to go back with the resident trooper. And if the board's comfortable with Mark Rivera as the selectmen being involved in that process, we could go back and come back at the next meeting with a recommendation and a cost estimate. Right now, we just wanted to vet the question that was presented to us from the Hebrew Board of Education. In a perfect world, I think if we had the resources and the ability to do it, I think we wouldn't even be talking like this. But like I said, if I could have had a conversation with the school board prior to the letter, I think I could have convinced them that it's not really doable, not for at least the beginning of the school year, based on what you just heard from Mark and myself. So it's not, it's not like we're trying to balk from the request. It's just not really something that's a reality that we could pull off. So I would suggest we get going on this and we come back to the September 1st meeting and visit this again. And we'll have suggestions on how to at least take some immediate actions to try to help them out.
Okay. I mean, I just, it's sad that, I mean, all this hadn't been put in last year's budget. It could have been started, here we are, we haven't even started the school year. And already, you know, we're being asked for funds and, you know, I get a little touchy. Taxpayers voted for a certain amount, and even that was a close vote. And we're already, you know, looking at spending extra money. And I feel that we have an obligation to be cognizant and move forward. But it's still not the way the process is supposed to work. Anybody else's comments? If you have, go ahead. Tiffany had her hand up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't, I'm on my phone. I'm sorry. I can't see people's hands or anything.
Oh, okay. Of course, because her hand is behind her microphone.
I mean, the only thing, just two quick things. You know, first, as I read this letter, it was pretty clear that they wanted to advocate using ARPA to start funding this position. So I think that we can, you know, take a breath from a budgetary perspective. I think they're just asking for that initial support. And I'd be happy to look at an accurate number. But secondly, just a general question I have. You know, I think that it'd be really helpful, and I don't know if this is a protocol thing or whatever, but you know, if Board of Ed members or the chair or the superintendent are listening to the meeting, is there anything that precludes us from asking them to talk about this request? Because I didn't, I didn't read this letter as anything other than an ARPA request, to be quite honest with you. So I don't know if there was something I missed or context. And I leave it to you, Mr. Chair, if that might be helpful in the future, that with requests like these, if we could hear from, you know, designees of that board so they can answer any questions we might have, just a general thought. Thank you.
And I don't have a problem at all if they're listening, if they want to add. The thing is, the first year may be ARPA, the second year and ongoing is going to be town budget. You know, so I know we discussed a similar thing back when you were talking about added fire department personnel. And they were going to be doing something with, it was a FEMA grant. And it was like, well, that's all fine, well and good for the first year. But the second year, that then falls onto the shoulders of the taxpayers. You know, so it's not just a one year and then it's no longer an issue. So, yeah. Peter, I know you had a hand up.
Yeah, I appreciate what Tiffany just said. And I think, and I agree with Andy. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here. We obviously have dialogue that needs to be had because I'm confused regarding the budget, you know, process. And I don't want to circumvent the budget process or the wishes of the public. I read it as an ARPA request and the recurring expense issue, I clearly would need to slow down and talk a lot more about because I don't think that was ever really the intention of the ARPA funds is to incur a future recurring budgetary expense. But at least, you know, we need to vet that out. And I think we really have to listen to what Andy and Mark come back with so we can have some foundational information before we even take it any further. So I would suggest that we just, at this point, move forward the recommendation of town manager, add it to the next meeting and then slow it down. There's no rush here. Clearly, they demonstrated that we can't institute something like this in terms of an SRO for the beginning of the school year. So let's table it till the meeting so we can have some real costs to the next meeting. And then we can have a complete dialogue. And maybe at that point, get some additional context from the folks who put the letter together at the board. But I don't think we need that today. I think we need to do what is recommended by Andy and continue the discussion at the next meeting. Thanks.
Okay. So basically, Andy and Mark would be working together to come up with some ideas and plans.
And the resident trooper.
And exactly. Yes. Yes. Okay. Anybody have any other comments? Okay, thank you. Oh, the draft agenda, which is in this pile. And again, any changes or additions, whatever, get your requests into the town staff. I don't know of anything else on that. Then our next item would be our approval of our minutes. So we would have the minutes of June 28th, 2022, July 21st of 2022, and August 2nd, 2022, the special meeting. And the reason that we had put the June 28th is because those of us in attendance at last meeting were not at that June 28th meeting. So I'm just wondering if it doesn't make sense just to make a motion to approve the minutes individually, one at a time. And then, you know, the tax refunds is listed. So move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the approval of the minutes of June 28th, 2022. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And it was three people that were there. Well, actually, it was two, Peter and Tiffany. So did those minutes look proper?
They look proper to me.
Okay, Peter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So all in favor of those minutes and I don't know how this is going to work. I'll say aye.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we can approve even if you're not in attendance. If you just, you can approve, right? That's what I thought I understood from the past when that question was raised. So you can still approve. Yeah, okay.
So all in favor of, of the June 28th, please say by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. And then we have the approval of the minutes of July 21st, 2022, and August 2nd of 2022. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Yes.
I'd like to pull out the July 21st because I have a whole bunch of corrections that, that need to be addressed.
Let's do the July 21st. And I, for some reason, I thought I had to and I, operating out of a brain fog. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll start with, the meeting actually was called to order at 7:01. And my only reason for that one minute is we wanted to tie in with our video. Go down to item number five, good to know. Dan Lawson, AHM Youth Service Award to Howard Dean Community Service Award awarded to Andrew Tierney and Donna Lanza. I guess that was, okay. Now we go to page two, Deputy Fire Marshal should be spelled correctly, which means that only, Marshall only has one L in this case. Town managers report. The state grant has consulted with, it's, as we all heard tonight, S H P O, not the C, that's in the minutes. Now, Donna Lanza secured, and it says here 105 million for improvements. That would have been nice, but it was actually, as we all heard tonight, 1.5 million. Big difference. And on the next page where it says, any other old business, that should be eliminated. We didn't have any. And I think that's all I found. This is a while ago. That was it. Oh, yes. We've got to go down to item number, go to item number nine. Selectmen's comments need to be reflected that they do not support the request. And then on 10, where it says GR and MR, that would have been myself and Mark. Their names, our names need to be spelled out as this is a permanent record. So I think that's all I found. Did I, Miss Anglet, you had found Dan?
To be honest, right now, I
Don't know.
Yeah, I, I just. I'll take your word for it because I'm just getting more brain fog. I actually tested negative yesterday for the first time in three weeks. So which is good, but I get tired easy. So hearing the I was going to say, I buried my the corrections of the July 21st, 2022 regular meeting, motion to accept as amended. Peter?
I wasn't in attendance, but I, based on Gail's thorough review and the corrections noted, I vote aye.
Mark?
I, I was in attendance and Gail, you are unbelievable at detecting the little minor things that are off. It's amazing. And if you say it needs to be corrected, it needs to be corrected. Aye on my part.
Tiffany?
I also was not there, but I'll, I trust Gail's edits, so I'll say aye.
Thank you.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, I was there and aye. And then our, the approval of the minutes as of, of August 2nd, 2022, the special meeting. Did you have anything on that one?
No.
Okay. Nope. Okay. So all in favor of the August 2nd, 2022 minutes as posted? Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
I don't think I was at that one, but Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. And then we have the tax refund as listed. All in favor, again, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye, but I have a question. Who, who are we giving the tax refunds to?
It's
There's one name there, right? Julian Conners?
Conners.
Okay. My sheet doesn't have anybody's name. All right. So I say aye.
Okay. Yeah, right there. It's on the screen.
Okay, I was looking in my book. All right.
Okay. Okay. Liaison reports? Go the other direction. Gail?
Okay, the senior center applications will be accepted soon for the renters rebate. Medicare open enrollment, it'll be starting shortly. And this is a good time for anybody already receiving Medicare to review their coverage and see if it's still the best choice for them. So call the senior center at 228-1700. The Douglas Library circulation continues to increase. The July numbers were higher than in the past couple of years. The summer reading program will be, will end next week. And storytime for the fall will be coming up soon. And a new program this year was the Adult Arts and Crafts Program, and it has been very, very successful. Hebron Board of Ed, they're preparing for the opening of school and the first day will be August 31st. And the board also updated their district advancement plan to reflect their work of the past year. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Tiffany?
Sure. So I'll start with the Green Committee. Right now, they're moving forward with weekly meetings to review the plan of conservation and development, focusing on the sustainability section. They're also going to start to work on the remainder of the Lee Sawyer Grant, which will be used to refresh the signage at the transfer station and education to surround it. And part of that grant does include recycling bins for town. And so they're getting an updated quote to include a number of bids from the ARPA funding. Once they complete that, they're also going to start reviewing how to spend the funding from the nickel per nit bill. And they've been quite successful running the swap shack and they're continuing to do that. For economic development, the Economic Development Commission has been working with FHI Studio and the branding survey that was sent out has closed. And a report summarizing the results will be shared once it's finalized. They're also looking at three possible brand concepts for the town of Hebron, and they'll continue discussing that in early September. And for open space and land acquisition, we had a special meeting. We reviewed the maps to look at that section of the plan of conservation and development to look at potential new properties. There were two motions. One was to recommend to the board that we look at a grant program application relative to the possible purchase of property located at Chittenden Road, which I believe we'll be discussing later. And also that we look into the 115 acre O'Connor property. And that's what I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mark?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Peter?
Parks and Rec Commission, July 25th meeting. They reported on the success of Hebron Day being moved to June and, and being done in combination with the celebration of Juneteenth, and they reported that to be a huge success. So they're very happy with the outcome of that. They approved a I frankly don't know what this is, a mandated reporter policy for the Parks and Rec staff and employees. And it's identical to what's being used in the Hebron Schools. And they wanted me to note that it will be coming before the board for approval at a, at a future date. So a new policy has been developed and you'll see something from Parks and Rec on that or from Andy in a future meeting. And then for those that may wish to attend, their August 22nd meeting was, has been moved to August 29th. The Board of Finance, most recent meeting, a special meeting on the 11th of this month. They spent a bit of time talking about the unassigned fund balance and providing, getting an update from Elaine on that now that the 2021 audit is complete. And we continue to show a significant healthy balance in that somewhere in the neighborhood of 20, about 21%, 21.23% versus a targeted amount of closer to 14. So the extra money's there. As a result, there is, there was an approval to move monies to the debt management fund because of that healthy balance and, and the need to continue to support the debt management fund. A million dollars was approved for that. And that recommendation, I guess, goes to the Board of Selectmen. And there's some other procedural items there, but they're moving forward with that recommendation as a reaction to support both the debt management policy and the unassigned fund balance. So more to follow on that, but that's moving forward. They did note that the unassigned fund balance didn't account yet for the funds for the non-lapsing fund of the Board of Education of about 228,000. So there'll be a slight offset there. So a lot of discussion around that. They did discuss the Board of Ed's request for the supplemental appropriation regard, at 253,372 for preschool. And the board unanimously did not support that and, and their decisions really subject around, really centered around the budget process and not, not being part of the budget process and really in conjunction with, and consistent with the letter that was received from the Board of Selectmen regarding rationale for not supporting that at this time or at least the way it was presented. And then ARPA funds, just a couple more notes here. ARPA funds were discussed. Just continuing to keep them on board. They were, it was just a discussion. And then they wrapped it up with liaison reports. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the sewer station, pump station upgrades, that's now finally going well again. I don't know if anybody had the chance. We had a big crane in town last weekend down by the Raymond Brook or down by 207. Had half the road blocked setting all the new vaults. Generators are in. We're still working with Eversource to try to get a solution to the electrical meters. That's going to be holding that job up if we can't get some movement on that. But we continue to work with them and see if they won't allow a different brand. But it's, you know, it's actually moving forward pretty good.
Good. Myself, I have nothing. Fire Department Corporation, unsure what's all going on there. Other than that, I, I have nothing. So with that, we have our public comment. And then after public comment, we have an anticipated executive session. So do we have anything for public comment?
Here is just a comment from the Brown部, just saying they needed to head out and thank you again.
Oh, thank you. Okay. With that then, make a motion that we move into executive session for a land acquisition matter. I don't know, do I list the locate, it's right there. 102 Chittenden Road along the Chittenden Oldley Roads, invite in Andy and anybody else?
Donna Lanza and then Matthew, Matthew Burgel, the town planner.
Okay. So it'd be Andy, Donna and Matt. So with that, we'll wait for Donna to state that.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Following the actions as a result of the executive session, I'll let somebody piece the proper words together because I just can't do it. I just can't think. I'm sorry.
So you, you want to, you want to put forward a motion that allows the town to apply for the open space land acquisition grant from the state. Matt, you might have the more formal name, but.
I don't know if he's there. So hearing Sorry, I'm here. I can, I can help out a little bit. So you could say move to recommend I guess the town planner pursue an open space and water said land acquisition grant, program grant with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the possible purchase of the O'Connor properties of approximately 115 acres at 102 Chittenden Road.
Andy, do we use your name in that to give you the power to pursue this grant as a representative of the town?
You know, I might end up having to sign the application. So you probably should, if that's the case.
I, I think you're correct, Mark.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I, I, I make a motion that we give town manager Andy Tierney the power to go forward with the land acquisition grant proposal and submit that on behalf of the town to purchase parcel number two of, I, I don't know, the estate. Do we have to have that in there too?
Would be parcel one, two and three. I think there's three separate parcels.
Parcel one, two and three of the, who, who's the owner of the property, Andy?
O'Connor.
Of the O'Connor family? Is that sufficient?
Located 102 Chittenden Road.
Yeah.
And along Chittenden Oldley.
Okay.
That should suffice, right?
Yeah, on the request, I got to find it. I put my executive session packet away, but didn't it list the actual parcel numbers?
Yeah, on the executive not on our paperwork. All we have is
So the pot, the lots are lots, number 49 dash two. So, so the pot, the, the lots are lots, number 49 dash two, 49 dash three and 50 dash five.
All right, I, I would submit that those numbers be part of the motion. That we, uh, any, any discussion on this?
Sounds good. We'll move to vote. All in favor? Pete?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. I think with that, I think we're done. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, uh, Donna. Thank you, Andy.
And I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting at 9:14.